I want to call to order the council meeting of December 12th, 2016. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock.
Here.
Hey Conway.
Here.
Ed Hattenback.
Here.
Alita Kaymine.
Here.
Tom Muthing.
Here.
Ray Warren.
Here.
Natalie Wolfe.
Here.
Scott Larmer.
Here.
Kevin Frank.
Here.
Chief Wallace.
Here.
Rick Kay.
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome everyone to our last regularly scheduled meeting of 2016. The first item on the agenda is our minutes from our meeting of November. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions? Seeing none, the minutes can be considered approved. We will now move on to the finance report for October 2016.
Including your packet is a memo that summarizes some of the financial activity for the month of October. I'd like to mention a few of those items. In regards to the earnings tax, the October collections totaled just a little less than $200,000. This is slightly down from October 2015's collection. It's actually down about 19%, but the total amount that's been received year-to-date on the earnings tax is $3.2 million. And our estimate, when we created this estimate in December of 2015, was we would collect $2,650,000. So obviously, we've exceeded it by over half a million dollars at this point. So the earnings tax continues to be coming in strong, even though this month was less than the previous year's month. The village did receive property tax in the month of October. We received collections in the amount of $73,000 for this to be the second half real estate property tax collections. And that brought our collections, our second half collections, to a total of $448,000 because we are asking for advances from the county. So that brings our total year-to-date receipts on property tax to $954,000. The local government fund for the month of October netted $4,700. So our total revenue to date is $4.4 million, and our estimate for the year is $4.9 million. So we've collected over 100% of our revenues so far through the month of October. And expenses for the month of October were a little quite, rather high, $602,000. There's a couple of reasons for that, primarily as pointed out in the Finance Committee meeting, transfers occurred. So we recall that in the operating budget, we planned for transfers to the capital budget and to the employee severance fund and also to the street program. So those occurred during the month of October. That explains why it's a little bit higher for the month of October. But the amount of money that's been spent so far this year is $3.3 million out of our $4.5 million budget. So we're about 72% of the budget has been spent as of the end of October. So we're doing well on the expense side. Expenses are being controlled. That leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.5 million at the end of October. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we'll move on to committee reports. And first, we will have a report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. First item I have is an adjustment to 2016 appropriations. Multi-part appropriations. The first item is to adjust the appropriations for the Kenwood-Southwest Joint Economic Development Zone escrow agency fund to increase the appropriations by $9,300. This is for some additional refunds which were not anticipated. We overestimated the income to the Jeds for 2016. So accordingly, we have to reduce the expenditures within the actual revenue. So in that regard, we're going to be reducing appropriations by $85,000 from the Kenwood Jeds Agency Fund. And the third item is to reduce the appropriations from the Mayor's Court Fund by $20,000. Accordingly, I wish to introduce ordinance number 2016-18 to amend appropriations for the fiscal year 2016.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2016-18, amending appropriations for fiscal year 2016. Are there any questions or comments? There's been no questions or comments. Please call the roll on ordinance 2016-18.
Richard Bardock.
Yes.
Hey Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
The next item I have is to present the annual appropriations for 2017 budget for this coming fiscal year. Purposes to fund the village appropriations and appropriate monies for the year 2017. In summary, the budget will have excess revenues of $192,000 for the year and wish to defer the rest of the discussion to our manager. We'll discuss this further.
All right, thank you. Included in the ordinance 2016-19 would be the operating budget as well as the capital budget for the village. And this budget process begins in October and falls into November, and at the end of November is when we met with the Finance Committee and then actually had two meetings with the Finance Committee to review the annual appropriations ordinance. What we're seeing with the 2017 budget is it's very similar to 2016, but there are a few changes. And I want to highlight some of the items that have been included in the budget. As was mentioned earlier, the earnings tax is the primary driver of our budget. And then in second place after that would be the police levy revenue and then property tax. So that's sort of the ranking of our revenue sources. So we take those revenues and then we look at the anticipated expenses and look at requests from the various departments. But included in the 2017 budget, we've kept staffing levels the same with the exception of one position, one additional position being funded in the Police Department. You may recall that staffing positions are down about five, are down from about five years ago. We have one less police position and we also have two less police supervisor positions and then one less employee in the Maintenance Department. But for the 2017 budget, what is included in here is one additional police position. So that will increase our officers by one, bringing us up to a total of 33 full-time positions. No other changes on dispatch or administrative positions or maintenance, just the increase on the police officer side. We do continue to fund part-time dispatch, and we do that for a couple of reasons. One is to, the primary reason is to maximize our officers' time so that we do not have officers sitting in dispatch. It's critical that we keep our officers out on the street, and so we have budgeted a little over $82,000 for part-time dispatch. So they supplement our full-time dispatchers. We have three full-time dispatchers and we have a clerk, administrative clerk in the Police Department. So the part-time dispatch becomes a supplement and gives us full 24-hour coverage on dispatch so we minimize the time that officers might have to sit behind the dispatch desk. I think it's also important to point out that the Police Department for the budget for this next year, even though they are funded from two different sources, we're receiving funds from the police levy, which is $1.6 million, and then the balance of that will come out of the general fund. So those two budgets together will fund the entire police operations for 2017. There was a little bit of capital money that was budgeted in addition that should be mentioned. One is that some improvements to the firing range downstairs, some investment in that area. Also, we have a budgeted in-car purchase of computer, computers for in-car purchase, in-car computer purchases, thank you. That's a tough one. And also, some funds for body cameras. Even though we have in-car cameras, this would be body cameras that would supplement our officer. And then in addition to that, we have two vehicles in the budget for the Police Department. One is a replacement cruiser, and then the second would be a vehicle for our detective. In the Fire Department, that's pretty much status quo, although we have included some dollars for a thermal imaging camera, which is something that is used to detect heat in walls or to find victims. It also can be used by our police officers as well. We do have some money in the budget for a, call it a Ward Diesel Filter System. This is something for our firehouse. And even though we've applied for a grant and we would anticipate getting a grant, if we're not successful in that grant, we may have to utilize those monies in order to buy that system for the firehouse. But this, the Fire Department budget does include money for the combined police and fire as well as maintenance, and involves the funding of their training and their various expenses that go along with the Fire Department. On the Maintenance Department's side, we'll continue with the services that the village residents rely on, brush chipping, leaf pickups, snow and ice control. We have budgeted $55,000 for salt for 2017. This is slightly less than what we budgeted this year, primarily because, as you all are aware, we just completed our new salt bin and we took a purchase of salt. We have a good supply now, so we believe that with the decreased cost that we were able to engage last month with the new contract, our salt expense will be less and we also have to purchase less because we'll have a supply on hand. There were some other items in the Maintenance Department budget, $20,000 for fuel. That represents the gasoline and diesel fuel that is used by the Maintenance Department. We'll be contracting out the right-of-way mowing as well as tree removal. And there were some items put into the capital budget primarily related to the fuel pump because we do dispense our own fuel at the garage. That item was funded as well as paving the north site lot. There's an area in the north site that does need to be paved in order to restore that pavement, so it's about $59,000 of paving that is necessary in that area. We also put in some monies for a few cameras at the north site. The only thing that's really unusual in the, all the other budgets, which would be the administration, courts, the law director, those types of things, would be in regards to some additional monies for consulting services that will likely be necessary as a result of development of village-owned land. So for example, on the Amberly Green, as we're talking about that, we'll likely engage the services of a planner to assist us in that process as we talk about the layout of the Amberly Green property. We have included money for information technology improvements. That has become a staple in our budget the last couple of years. We also have a contingency line item of about $20,000 in the 2017 budget. The transfers, as I mentioned earlier, are also in the 2017 budget. They are bumped up by $5,000. So we're putting $40,000 into the accrued time liability. That takes away the liability that we have in terms of employees that are eligible for retirement, so we're funding those on as-needed basis. So when employees reach a retirement plateau, we put monies into that particular fund in order to fund them. We also have a $200,000 transfer to the Street Fund. That would be for the Street Program for 2017. And then in the Capital Fund, transferring $150,000 to fund the majority of our capital budget. So that would bring our capital budget with the current balance in the fund and the $150,000 transfer, gives us a capital budget of about $303,000. For all the other funds, which we call non-general fund funds, those will be budgeted at their either anticipated revenue level or the current fund balance. So we have some funds that take in monies throughout the year, so we anticipate what those revenues are. Other funds are pretty much flat. They're not going to get additional monies in, but we will appropriate those so that we can use them as we budget. So including your packet was the appropriations. I also gave you a revenue estimate for the 2017, and then did a summary of all the items included in the budget and also a capital budget summary. That pretty much encapsulates most of the 2017 budget.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so quarterly, I would like to introduce ordinance number 2016-19, the ordinance making appropriations for the expenses for the village of Amberly for the fiscal year 2017.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2016-19, which makes appropriations for expenses for the village of Amberly for fiscal year 2017. Are there any questions or comments?
Do you want to go first?
Brad.
I'm going to say what you're going to say. Well, I just wanted to comment on the addition of the staff person in the Police Department. In a certain way, that feels like a big deal to be increasing our personnel, but it real, I would like to comment from the standpoint of the Police-Fire Committee. I think it comes rather naturally out of the process that we've been following in the last couple of years of meeting quarterly and getting updates from the chief and, you know, hearing about operations and the different challenges they have with scheduling or people out sick or needing a lot of overtime. It just seems like there's always a reason to need some additional support, so it seemed kind of like a natural progression. And so we have discussed it in that committee probably twice, just informally, and then it came into play. Just as a process comment.
Thanks, Peg. Actually, I was going to ask, am I on? Actually, I was going to ask a question related to that. Actually, if village manager or the chief would like to speak, any additional, in addition to what Peg just shared in terms of describing the need for an additional police officer, that's...
From my perspective, this is something that we have talked about for the last two years in regards to increasing our staffing. I think it became more apparent this year with the number of folks that we have out on some type of leave, whether it's injury or a medical leave. And then I think it also hits home when the chief expressed to me he was coming back from a conference early because there were not enough personnel and he felt like he needed to get back early. So that sort of put me over the top that we needed to take that action now in order to supplement our police.
Just a comment from my perspective. I actually think this has been excellent process. The chief, you know, a couple of years ago, really took a step out and said, "I'm willing to try this." And we did this. And I think Councilwoman Conway pointed out that, you know, the nice thing from a process standpoint, we have the Police and Fire Committee meeting regularly, and this was highlighted as an issue and it was followed and so forth. So I feel really good about the process that was followed, the fact that we were well-informed, and that, you know, I really do appreciate the chief, you know, trying something new and then stepping back and saying, you know, "Hey, you know, we tried this, you know, now we just need to, you know, do a little bit something different." But, you know, I'm very encouraged constantly that the willingness to try new things. And, you know, I always hear the chief or the village manager always saying, "We're going to try this and try that." And I think trying new things is the secret. And then if you find that you pushed it a little too far, then the important thing is you react to it. So I feel really good about this. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016-19, making the appropriations for fiscal 2017. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock.
Yes.
Hey Conway.
Yes.
Ed Hattenback.
Yes.
Alita Kaymine.
Yes.
Tom Muthing.
Yes.
Ray Warren.
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce a resolution for the annual insurance renewal. Finance Committee met with Michael Fischel, our insurance consultant, and we're very happy to report that the insurance renewal for this coming year is, proposal is for the amount of $71,605, which is an increase of only $721 over last year's insurance premium. Quarterly, I would like to introduce Resolution Number 2016-49, Resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Argadoc for the property casualty insurance for the year 2017.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-49, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for our insurance program for 2017. Are there any questions or comments?
One comment. So Ed, when I read this, it looks like the remuneration is going up by less than 1%.
That's correct. There is one other item which goes along with this thing, is the fact that we don't pay a commission, but we pay a management fee or consulting fee to these locans for their services, which has been well expended over the past several years considering the issues with the water damage which we had a couple of years ago and other issues.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-49. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The next item I have is to submit the police levy renewal to the voters. I would like to introduce Resolution Number 2016-50, the resolution submitting, Resolution submitting proposed renewal levy for public safety purposes to the Board of Elections for placement on the ballot on May the 2nd, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-50, which would submit our proposed renewal levy at the eight mil level, eight mil level to the Board of Elections for placement on the May 2017 ballot. Are there any questions or comments?
This is a point, this is a reduction of the mileage from the current levy which we have. It reduces the mileage from 10 mils to eight.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-50. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to the Police and Fire Committee.
Okay. The Police-Fire Committee met on November 28th to discuss the renewal of our emergency services contract, which expires at the end of the year after a three-year period. For the past decade or more, the village has received emergency services from two other jurisdictions. Gulf Manor serves the western part of the village and Deer Park-Silverton serves the eastern part with Ridge Road loosely being the dividing line. The contract that is in your packet is another three-year agreement. By and large, both residents and administer, all of us are very pleased with the service that is provided to residents. The cost increases over the years have been a bit of a concern, and this year, Scott and the chief were very firm and clear about what their objective was in terms of what level of increase they were willing to absorb. And so the contract provides for a three-year, a 3% increase each year. In 2017, the village will pay $72,100 to each jurisdiction. In 2018, it'll be $74,265 to each, and then in 2019, $76,500 to each. So the committee was very appreciative of their efforts to bring this about and keep costs sustainable, and so therefore, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 2016-51, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for paramedic and EMS services with Gulf Manor and Deer Park-Silverton Joint Fire District. So moved.
Second. Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-51, authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for paramedic services. Are there any questions or comments?
One comment. Peg, I know in the past years, or at least several years ago, I don't know if this came from the village manager, it didn't come from you, I think maybe from the previous village manager or maybe the police chief. There was some record in terms of how many runs there were on an annual basis or something like that. Is that something that is worth revealing?
I'm going to defer to the chief on that one, or...
Do you want to know how many runs there are annually?
Yeah.
That's your question?
I think probably...
And we don't have to, we don't have to discuss this now. It could be, it could be at a committee...
I think the question that had come up in the past was to try to get a better understanding of how much revenue each of the jurisdictions were getting from reimbursement from insurance companies on runs. I think that was what the gist of the questions was. And that was reported on to the committee, and I think the chief has that information.
Yeah, and we, when we actually met with them and talked about that, one thing is the numbers aren't as substantial as you'd think they would be, but Deer Park-Silverton, I think they're probably in the range of about $24,000 is what they'll bring in, and then Gulf Manor is probably 18, give or take. It obviously depends on the locations, what the runs are. And Deer Park usually makes between 100 and 120 runs annually. In Gulf Manor, they can range from probably 90 to 110. But what we try to do is we base it on what we're paying them. It's hard to base on what they're going to receive, but we actually calculate that in there. We try to come up with a fair number that it will cost for an EMS run. So if a basic EMS run costs you $600, an ALS run, ALS run's going to cost you more for advanced life support, whether they use an AED, give medications, start IVs and things like that. So an ALS run can cost up to $1,200 to $1,500 depending on what they do. So we try to come up with the average to help it out.
A lot more than I anticipated. Thank you.
That's, I got to say that that's real unusual, that you would say that's more than you anticipated.
Especially given the...
Any other questions? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2016-51, authorizing the village manager to enter into contracts for our EMS services. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, we will now move on to the Health, Education, and Welfare Committee.
Thank you. The Health, Education, and Welfare Committee of Council has been meeting and discussing and implementing a variety of traffic measures designed to improve pedestrian safety in Amberly, and last month, you had a resolution in support of pedestrian safety, and that was tabled, so I would like to move to untape that.
I move to...
Well, I move.
Oh, you moved second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we take Resolution 2016-48 off the table. It was tabled at the last meeting. Is there any discussion first before I ask for a vote on that?
Yeah, no, I got some more stuff.
I know. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we take Resolution 2016-48 off the table and discuss that this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that that motion passes unanimously.
So as I stated last month, and then again, I'll restate tonight, the committee met just prior to the council meeting last month to finalize a resolution to present to council which emphasizes council's continued support for improving and implementing these measures, including the three Es of pedestrian safety, education, engineering, and enforcement. Amberly was established in the 1940s and streets and neighborhoods were planned without any consideration to walkability. Additionally, in the ensuing decades, Amberly has become increasingly congested, particularly during rush hours. We are conveniently situated at the crossroads of I-75, I-71, and Ronald Reagan Highway. The resolution you have before you is a culmination of the two years of work on the part of the HGW Committee, Council, and the Department of Safety. It's our intention that these efforts will continue to be a priority both to Council and the village administration as the demographics of Amberly change and our residents desire to be safe when walking or cycling on our roads. Now, which ordinance do we, which resolution, I mean, because we have...
Here. At the last meeting, it was moved and seconded...
On this one.
That we adopt Resolution 2016-48, which was the unamended version of that.
Okay.
So if there is an amendment that you would like to make, you should propose that as a separate resolution. That'll... That'll be subject to a second, we can vote, vote on that, and then.
Can I do that now?
Yes, you can do that now.
Okay. So you have two copies of the resolution before you, twenty-six, twenty-sixteen dash forty-eight, and one of them has the red line. And I would like to move that, that the resolution be amended to, to the red line version.
Second.
Yeah, go on. Well, I was gonna, before we vote on it.
Okay, so it has been moved and seconded that we amend resolution 2016 dash forty-eight in section six of the resolution, which would remove the language and then place in the language as proposed. And the proposed language is, says, "In order that we determine appropriate level of expenditure on this important issue, the level of expenditure on pedestrian safety during the years 2015 and 2016 will be reviewed by the Health, Education and Welfare Committee, and this will be specifically tracked in 2017. In 2018, this will be a specific budget item." So it has been moved and seconded that we amend that, is there any discussion on it? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we amend the resolution to include this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, being noted that the resolution has been amended unanimously. So now, trying to pick up.
So this resolution, I mean, what it is doing is, is putting in writing what, everything that we have been doing as a, already as a council. But it is emphasizing that we strongly believe in its importance. But in, in particular, I would like to call council's attention to section five, which states that whenever, whenever street and road improvements are planned, attention will be given to accommodate pedestrian and bicycle safety needs. And in keeping with current practice, any unused road and street repair funds will be allocated as needed to implement pedestrian and bicycle safety. And this has been the informal practice for the last two years, but this makes a little more form. And that's all I have.
Okay, is there any other discussion? It is now, we, what you have before you is the amended resolution 2016 dash forty-eight. And that has been moved and seconded. So if there's no further discussion, the amended, I ask for a vote on the amended resolution 2016 dash forty-eight, which declares our support for traffic safety and pedestrian safety. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the amended resolution passes unanimously.
That concludes my report.
Okay, before we move on to the Land Development Committee, there's nothing on the Streets Committee as far as need, need to approve. But did you want to report on what, at your last meeting?
Sure, thank you. The Streets, Streets Committee met last week on December fifth. And as Mayor shared, there are no resolutions being proposed that need to be passed by council this evening. I just wanted to highlight just a couple of items that we discussed at the meeting. This was a follow-up, the items I'm gonna talk about was a follow-up of discussions we had at our September Streets Committee meeting, having to do with the Elbrook Section Road intersection and, and what type of options we might want to consider to improve lighting at the intersection. The second item that we talked about was related to a walkway sidewalk along Elbrook Road that would be on the north side of, north of Section Road down to the Creek Bridge. And again, we had very good input from, from, from Wes Brown in terms of what the possible cost of, of doing that if we so decided to move forward. We also had some conversation, discussions regarding how this would be paid for. And there were a variety of options that were presented. And so that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions? If not, we will move on to the Land Development Committee. And as Chair of the Land Development Committee, my report first is around the proposed North Site ground lease. We have been working as a council on the North Site for quite a few years. We went through a rezoning process for the new North Site, I believe in two thousand, late two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. And then in two thousand fifteen, we actually listed the property with Jones, Lang and LaSalle. And then in August of two thousand fifteen, council approved entering into a contract with Sherman Properties to sell fourteen acres. I mean, one of the things council did a few years ago is in looking at the property, the total property is about thirty acres. And we very much concluded that having our maintenance site on that, that property is, is very valuable to the village. And so we did not want to market the entire property. We basically wanted to market fourteen of the thirty acres and, and reserve the remaining sixteen for our village maintenance site. So the property was, was marketed. Sherman Properties entered into the agreement with us, but it was always subject to due diligence and basically finding a tenant for the property. This has continued to be worked on by the village manager and by council over the last year, year and a half. And we're now, we went through traffic studies, we went through discussions with the county. The property clearly has lots of challenges. And if it wasn't for the fact that the property has a great location, I don't think anyone would even look at the property, given the challenges that the property faced. But it is in a great location. And so what, what before you, is before you tonight is a proposal to enter into a ground lease. We cannot really sell a portion of the property because of issues that we have with the county. And, and they own a half acre at the front of the lot, which prevents us from really selling and, and carding, and taking the property and, and putting it into individual lots. But we can clearly enter into a ground lease, which would allow, allow the construction of a office building. The proposal is for a medical office building. This really, I think we have concluded as a Land Development Committee, is the ideal type of tenant for the property, because it does not result in any increase in rush hour traffic, which is the real issue on that property. Medical office building spreads its, its visitors across the entire day. And so this, this property, it would involve one point nine acres of the total fourteen acres that we envisioned possibly being able to use for some kind of revenue generation. It provides for a initial twelve thousand, five hundred dollars per year for the first five years to the village. But most importantly, and what we really want to do on this property is try to get a tenant in there that will create earnings tax for the, for the village. And this particular medical office building, we believe, will generate approximately forty thousand of annual revenues to the village every year. So I, I really do think this is a, a great solution to a very challenging situation. And I commend the village manager for really diligently working on this despite the many challenges that the property faces. I know each of the council members did receive a letter today from one of the councilmen in Reading. I believe, and I'm, I will take an action to respond to this person, because in reality, we have been very diligent and responded to virtually every one of these issues. I think we have been very cognizant of the, our neighbors in Reading on Maple Avenue throughout this entire process, starting with the zoning and indeed in this process. And I don't believe that this particular tenant would be objected to or have any real reason to object to it. People will object to things, you know, for, for no good reason. But this is a very good tenant for the property and, and does not represent any kind of impact on those particular residents. So I would, because of, of the time urgency of this, the, the Mercy Medical would like to get this deal done pronto. And the reason is, they are, their lease on their existing offices are up at the end of 2017. So they really need to make a decision now as to whether they go here or whether they go to another existing office building, probably over closer to Jewish Hospital. So I would first like to make a motion that we waive the three readings on this particular ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2016 dash twenty, which would allow us to move expeditiously on entering into this ground lease. Is there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock? Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
Okay, next I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2016 dash twenty, which would authorize the village manager to enter into an agreement with Sherman Properties for a ground lease on a portion of the North Site.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash twenty. Are there any questions or comments?
One comment, I'd like to, and I think I probably speak for all of council, and I know the mayor has shared this a few moments ago. I'd certainly like to thank the village manager for his perseverance in working on this. I know this has been a long, I mean, we've talked about this for years in terms of what we can possibly do on the North Site. And finally, it looks like something, looks like something will be happening. And so I certainly thank you, I thank, thank village council also for putting together this, this agreement. And everyone who, and everyone who was associated with this, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash twenty. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
And finally, on ordinance 2016 dash twenty, again, because of the urgency of, of doing this. And I do want to state that, you know, we as a village are trying to do everything we possibly can do to make this as a done deal. But it is not a done deal. I mean, there, there are still a lot of things that need to be done. But again, we as the village want to do everything possible so that we can get this deal done, because it is something very beneficial to the village. So I would like to, because of this urgency, like to move that we declare this as an emergency, which would allow the ordinance to come, to go into effect immediately.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we would declare an emergency related to ordinance 2016 dash twenty, which will allow the ordinance to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments?
Mayor, I was just gonna comment on the timing. The tenant is intended to be Mercy Health. And their first deadline was back in Labor Day. And then it was around Thanksgiving, and now now. I mean, we've, we've been told that this is kind of the last opportunity to put this through before they, just timing-wise for construction and whatnot, that they have to take a different site that, as you said, is kind of ready and waiting for them in Blue Asher, Kenwood area or someone like that. So timing-wise, this has been going on for a while. The parties have been talking details about the lease. I mean, nitty-gritty details for four, six, eight weeks, I mean, for a long time. So it's not like this has just come up today. And just as far as the, just wanted to reference real quick Reading's letter from the council member there. This is very, very preliminary. This just says a medical office building is proposed to go there and that the village is okay with that. There are very, very detailed site plans and construction details to come that we don't even know what they are yet. So the North Site zoning has very stringent requirements, much more so than the rest of our districts, frankly, as far as all the information that they have to provide for the village. And that is coming down the pike, and people will have an opportunity to comment on all that.
Thank you. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we declare emergency related to ordinance 2016 dash twenty. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock? Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alita K. Mine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wu?
Yes.
And then, also tonight, we have before you resolution 2016 dash fifty-two. As part of what Mercy wants to do on the site, at the very front of the property, just to the, it would be to the south of our entrance driveway, that particular property is owned by the county. And that is kind of the entrance to the property. The county wants to maintain ownership of that property, because if in fact, the road is ever widened, or if there's something that needs to be done for Ronald Reagan, they want to maintain that ownership. But if Mercy, Mercy would like to have a sign on that particular parcel. And so before you tonight is a resolution which would authorize the village manager to enter into an agreement with Hamilton County, which would allow for the placement of a sign on their particular property. The county has indicated that they're amenable to this. And this is something that is very important to Mercy, Mercy Medical. So I hereby move that we adopt resolution 2016 dash fifty-two, authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with the county for the placement of this sign.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2016 dash fifty-two. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2016 dash fifty-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously. And that concludes the Land Development Committee report. We will now move on to the Management Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items I wanted to mention. Leaf collection will end on December the thirtieth. The village continues to collect leaves throughout the, throughout the village. Just encourage residents to get their leaves to the, to the, to the street. And we will pick them up by December thirtieth. And just as a reminder to residents that don't have their leaves to the, to the street by December thirtieth, they can be bagged and can be picked up by Rumpke, or they can be integrated into a backyard compost. The village was not successful in its application for the Ohio Public Works Commission grant for the reconstruction of Farmcrest subdivision. You may recall, a few months ago, council passed a resolution in support in applying for the grant from Ohio Public Works Commission. But the village was turned down. This is the second time we have been turned down for this particular grant application. We were also not considered for some other funding that, that we thought perhaps we might be in line for. So staff will continue to work on this particular project to see what we can do to modify our application, to see how we can position ourselves to receive those funds, because that's, those, those two streets in that area are particularly in need of reconstruction. And the last item I wanted to mention, as we indicated in the Village E-News that went out the last week, package theft is something that is rampant, especially this time of the year. And we just encourage residents to take proactive measures in regards to packages being delivered to their home. If somebody is not there, they should probably try to have their packages delivered to someplace where somebody is there, such as your workplace, if that's permissible. Or a neighbor, or something like that. Or if nobody can be home, let the carrier know where to place those packages so they're not visible out on the, out on the front porch or front stoop. So we just encourage residents to be vigilant, especially for those delivery, commercial delivery vehicles that are delivering packages this time of the year. If you see a suspicious vehicle that might be following one of those types of commercial vehicles, to report that to our police department as well. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the mayor? If not, we will move on to the, do you have a report?
Initially, I didn't, but.
Initially, I didn't, but there was an incident that occurred that I'd like to talk about. On Friday afternoon, our, we received a call and dispatch reference a subject that was slumped over a wheel of a car on Long Meadow, and I just want to commend Officer Robbins, Officer Fritch, and one of our maintenance workers, Rob Langdon. The maintenance crew happened to be in that area, the officers responding, and it was actually a heroin overdose. And we began carrying Narcan in our cars, and the officers actually administered three doses, officers administered doses, and Rob Langdon was there to assist him and continue to put him together. After three doses, they started getting to come back around at that point, and then at that time, the squad responded and transported to the hospital. But I just want to commend those three guys working together. This goes to show that, you know, even though the service department's, you know, doing a different job, the guys fell together on their fireside and worked together and really kept this guy alive.
Any questions for the chief? Now we'll move on to the mayor's report, and just a couple of things. The Environmental Stewardship Committee met for the last time on November 15th. Really, I just want to mention, the program for next year has been kind of finalized at least the early part of the year. There will be a program in February where they'll show the video Trees in Trouble and talk about things that residents can do with, with respect to trees. The One Stop Drop, which is our recycling event that we have been, I think this will be the fourth year that we've held this, it will be on April 2nd, 2017, and then our Arbor Day program will be on April 24th. The other thing related to that, Amberly was again recognized by the We Thrive program by Hamilton County as one of the communities that continues to be very active in We Thrive. This was done at a program two weeks ago where Amberly was recognized, and Mary Stillpass, as Chair of the Environmental Stewardship Committee, was recognized as one of the community champions. So, again, I think that's a real credit to Amberly Village. The other thing I wanted to mention was, there has been, we continue to really try to communicate a lot around what's going on down at the old Gibson property. We had a communication with, with residents in the Elbrook area in late November. There is a video that was put together that, that has basically myself and Melissa Johnson from the Port Authority answering questions about what's going on at the property, and that's available to residents. And the demolition of the building kicked off last week, so the demolition of the building is underway, and that, that is expected to take between three and four months. The asbestos in the back of the building has been remediated. They're still doing some asbestos remediation in the front of the building, but the demolition has started in the back of the building where the remediation has already started, so. And that, that concludes my, my report. Are there any questions or comments? If not, we will move on to new business.
I just wanted to ask our law director if you could give a update on your activities relative to the Duke pipeline.
Yeah, sure, thanks. And just in case council members aren't sure, in case the residents aren't sure, the status of this is, Duke filed an application to install its pipeline, and they proposed two different routes. The siting board has to determine that the application is complete before anything happens, before the siting board considers the merit of the application, before they consider any objections to the application. The board has to determine that the application is complete and final and ready to be reviewed. That hasn't happened yet. The board ordered Duke to have one additional public informational meeting to discuss the details of the plan with, with residents affected by the pipeline. That hasn't happened yet, that extra meeting. That's probably going to happen around January, as I was told before this meeting started, but it hasn't actually been scheduled. There's no particular date scheduled. Once that meeting happens, we presume the siting board will find that the application is then complete. At that point, the village and others can intervene, which is the legal phrase they use with the siting board. The village can intervene and then be a party to the administrative proceedings, which means the village can object, the village can introduce its own evidence, the village can request information from Duke, kind of like how a lawsuit works, we call it discovery and whatnot, information going back and forth. So, that time has not even started yet. The clock hasn't started yet, really. We've kind of been in limbo. In the background, what's been happening is jurisdictions, including attorneys of the jurisdictions affected by the pipeline, have been meeting and will meet further to discuss coordinating responses and objections to the pipeline. So rather than having five or six or seven or eight different jurisdictions all reinventing the wheel and spending money to do the same things and argue the same thing before the board, we're going to coordinate it, so only one or two or three people will be presenting to the board, but in a way that everyone's voice and objections are still heard. We'll be coordinating things like requesting information from Duke. So rather than sending eight different requests for the same information, it should just come one time. So, the attorneys have had one conference call so far in November. They were supposed to have another one last week, but it's going to be Thursday of this week to discuss how the coordination's going to happen. The city of Cincinnati and Hamilton County are taking the lead. They're the larger agencies that just have more resources, and they have taken the lead. I assume they will still take the lead. We don't know yet what role Amberly Village and other smaller jurisdictions will, will have in this process. I think we're still trying to determine whether the city and county already have the professional and technical staff to respond to Duke's pipeline. I mean, there, there are tons of different issues that come up, like environmental effects of the Duke pipeline, biological effects on streams and animals and things like that, that many people may not consider. So, does the city and county already have that professional expertise to address it on a staff level, or do the jurisdictions need to hire an expert witness to come in and give the level of detail and expertise that we might need to object to what Duke's proposing? So, right now, I don't have any details as far as what the legal strategy is, except to say, we are coordinating with the other jurisdictions to make sure Amberly's voice is heard, but so Amberly doesn't have to foot the entire bill either. That hopefully we can kind of piggyback as much as possible on what the county's doing, what the city's doing.
Do you have any insight from anywhere on why they're taking so long to schedule this meeting?
No, I haven't heard a single word. It seems like it's been a month or two already just since the board said have the meeting, and it's not even scheduled yet, so I don't know.
I know.
I mean, the only thing I would comment, and I can't, can't remember the gentleman's name, that was at the demolition.
Lee Barrett.
I talked to him ahead of time, and he said, he confirmed that they were intending to meet in, or have the public meeting in January. But he said, you know, what they've really been focusing on is these meetings with individual communities and things like that, and they stated, he felt that that was a better thing to do than rush into having another public meeting.
Oh yeah, with shouting. I said that somewhere else. I heard them speak. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other new business? If not, the next item on the agenda is the manager's review. So I will entertain, because the manager's review is employee-related item, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
I agree with you, we move to executive session.
To consider an employee-related matter.
Normally, if, I recommend being a little more specific about what you're going to do, such as to consider the employment of the manager, the compensation of the manager. If that's what you intend to do, I'd recommend expressing it in those words.
I move to go, we go on to executive session to, I want a review of the most manager and consider his compensation.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adjourn to executive session to consider the manager's review and compensation. Please call the roll.
Richard Bardock?
Yes.
Hank Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattonback?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
Okay, for those present, our intention is we'll go into executive session. We will come back out of executive session, but it pretty much will be just to adjourn the meeting. So, if you want to stay around, you're more than welcome.